Make it happen.
Way too much.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And thanks for our visit Beth. Only visitor we have, a teacher visitor tonight. And Mr. Severson, you have some thank yous and congratulations.
Yep, just one for Hope Wilson for qualifying for the state track meet. And then there's also one going around, so I'd like just to make sure you guys see that. For you guys for offering the massages for the, for the teachers for that day. For teacher appreciation for the staff, so thank you to the school board for that.
Thanks. Agenda, you got any additions or changes to that?
Nope, I don't.
Thanks, bud. Need approval of the agenda, no change. All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved. Next, we have the consent agenda, we cover your minutes, bills, and financial reports. Notice we have a lot of minutes, so all the minutes is in that packet you got.
Put a packet.
Packet one.
Yeah. Packet one.
I started at four and went back once. I'll make a motion to deal with all of that.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Michelle, roll call.
Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yep.
Michelle, yes. Cindy.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Well, I did wonder about a three hundred dollar weed whacker.
Okay, committee of boards, presidents report to have none. Career in tech, we actually, our regular board meeting's gonna be moved into next week, but since last time, we've had a resignation of Steve Thompson, who was the new director we hired. And as of yesterday, we, Derek Bok will be the new director of the vocational center. We do have two openings in our field, uh, IT or the computer classes and health careers. So we're looking on getting those filled and we're gonna meet next week, so. Got any questions on career in tech? You got any on answering, but we won't meet for this month until next, next week, so. Activity directors report, Mr. Severson.
Nothing much, just that all the scheduling is done, so we're, we're set for next year.
Melissa mustn't have a technology report. She'll come back.
I've never seen her miss out on that opportunity.
Before she comes back, did you, did you introduce Danielle to everybody? Everybody remember?
We kind of, we'll, go ahead.
Okay. Danielle Bozzi, is that how we present it?
Bussy.
Oh, bossy, that's right, cause, cause Brett had a, Brett had a bossy. He said he's glad to meet a bossy woman, he told herself. Um, new elementary principal will be approving her contract tonight, so I guess if you don't like her conversations while we're here, so you can, you're getting a preview of what you're gonna get. Okay, sorry Brett, hold on over here. No, so you get a preview and then you could approve her contract coming up here shortly, so now you can put Melissa on.
We thought there wasn't a technology report during that.
Well, it's already time for me.
Yeah.
Yeah. We are. What happened to make sure we're like?
Yeah, I got things to do.
I think I was told by somebody that I took too long usually on my reports, so I couldn't have a long report. Anyway, I don't encourage to report, I'm just getting stuff for, ready for next year. We sold iPads today, those are gone, so sold a lot of tiny iPads and, yeah, so just setting up accounts and some of your computers and.
Okay. Anybody have any questions with Mrs. Beth?
How's that look?
If you just keep her to that length, that's good. Building and grounds.
Uh, just the only thing I had, I emailed all the four building grounds people. We were talking about that skid steer and the more Bud and I thought about it, I think it's better if we just go back to the lease and not purchase that machine. And we talked about it at the meeting and we weren't sure what we wanted to do and we were gonna think about it, but I guess Bud's recommendation is we go with another lease.
How many hours are that?
What'd we say Brett, you remember? How much?
About eight hundred.
It wasn't, it wasn't a lot, but.
That's like Brian Spanking.
But his recommenda-, I mean, what is it? What was the, the buyout on it was?
Twenty-four thousand.
Was it twenty-four thousand, like three or four years of another lease.
With that, you get all maintenance and warranty and all that stuff with it?
And everything that they, that we got, when we got the machine, there's, Bud said there's a whole bunch of attachments and whatever, and that's all stays. That'll be, that's ours.
Cause we bought the attachments.
We bought the attachments.
Did we just put new tires on it?
Yep.
Yes.
Well, that was a poor choice.
Yeah. You always, you always decide to trade it in before you put the tires on.
Yeah, that's right, there you go. So, that's kind of where we're at, and if anybody has a real objection, you know, it, um, business with Bud, but I, I guess, I, you know, like you said, if we go, it was at eight thousand dollars, that the lease a year is at?
Lease is six something.
Sixty-one ninety-four or something.
So you're talking four years in with a new, another lease, we, I mean, be another four years before.
What is our, what would be the new lease payment, are you any idea?
I thought he said right around the same thing, he said he'd get it for the same price, so.
And what's the buyout on the next one, you got any idea?
Nah, he didn't say it. Nah, he didn't say it.
That'd be good to know.
Yeah.
Okay, I can check that out, I can have Bud check that out. Cause he just got the, I mean, I, will they have that for, if we have, we have for four years or whatever we lease it for, will they have a, will they be able to give them a price?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We knew our buyout when we got into the lease.
Okay. So he tell, they tell you that upfront then, okay? And I'll check with Bud and see what it is and. But I think we have to have August, I think, so we're okay right now, we're just, we'll, we'll get that information and I can email it for it. Nope, no, we don't do it.
Do we do it next month?
Yeah, we can do it next month, we can do whatever we want, but it just, we've got till August to make the decision, so.
So then we can think on that and we can decide, yeah, we should, we should know what our buyout is and we know what.
Yeah.
Didn't tire your back off.
I would, I would, my only concern is, I think we could buy out for twenty-four thousand and in two, three years trade it off and probably get thirty, forty thousand for it on trade-in. Cause it's only got eight hundred dollars. Cause I know if they take it, they're not gonna sell for twenty-four thousand dollars.
I mean, actually, it would almost be better if you really wanted a new one, get the lease and buy out for twenty-four, sell it for thirty-nine.
We, we could take the profit off, that's what we want to do, instead of letting it back.
I'm not sure we wanna get into that, you know, machinery jack.
That was the only, that was the only question Bud had, was if we turn it back and if we don't turn it back and then sell it and go into another lease, you know, we're just basically, we're being that person that's doing this buying and selling, not in a hole. If we should probably do that.
Can we do that or not?
I imagine you could put it on.
I believe we could get more than twenty-four grand for the machine that's sitting on.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, I'll give you twenty-four.
I'll give you twenty-four.
Go, go twenty-five, make it sound like, there you go.
But I think we find out what some numbers exactly, what the lease would be, what our buyout is.
Okay.
Cause I did try calling once, I got ahold of him, he was busy, I never got to really talk to him.
Yeah, cause I sent a couple and I didn't get nothing back from you, I wanted to know the hours and some of that stuff, so. Okay. Transportation, we have nothing more, we didn't have a transportation bill down.
No, we'll just put, no, we'll, we'll just put another, we'll budget another bus for next year, so just say.
Did we get our own bus for?
Yep, that was, that was the year before the end of school and they, they ran it for a little bit.
Budget and finance, we.
We just need to set a meeting, when do we wanna meet as far as? You know, once we get negotiations settled, we wanna have a meeting in July or August.
We're gonna have to start work, cause we need that budget turned in by first part of August, correct Amy?
August down.
Yeah. So yeah.
So we'd have to, we'd have to have.
It can be changed after that.
Right, but we gotta have the preliminary.
We just have a preliminary one in by the tenth, okay?
When's our next meeting?
Next meeting is in July, we could, we could have a budget and finance before the meeting if you want to do that. So our, our next meeting would be what, the twenty-fourth or, no, twelve, seventeen.
Seventeen.
So we could do something before the seventeenth.
That would probably work.
Okay, I'll get ahold of you guys and we'll get a date set, okay?
Policy.
The only one we've got, we'll have to deal with once negotiation's done is the sick leave bank. We'll have to go back to that one again, if, depending on what we do with this, what we do with negotiations.
JR, which isn't here, he said we should look at, he told me something with early graduation policy.
Okay.
Cause he said that's gonna be coming up and he'd like something in place.
Didn't we talk?
We've got, we've got a, we've got an early graduation policy.
Well, then why, or he wants something changed in it, or something.
He wants, what he's, I think what he was looking at was, was something to do with what we wanna do credit-wise.
Okay, there's something with that, that he wants to look at.
Yeah, cause if we leave it where it is now, is it twenty-two, I think, and, and they can get, they get seven credits their first year and seven credits their second year. So if they take, you know, seven, whatever, I mean, there, there's a way, actually, I think there was seven, but it would easily get there after three years, instead of making it a four-year. No, we didn't, we didn't fix it as far as, well, we, we, we've got rid of the, we now only have seven periods, but they're still gonna be able to take seven periods, so it's gonna be close to twenty-two. And, and so he's thinking if we raise it to like twenty-four, that would help, but I, I think that's where he was going with that.
He wants something to do with the early grad, so I, he didn't tell me exactly what it was, he said just bring it up that, policies should look at that.
The reason. Yeah, cause he, he had mentioned that he's had, Allison's had a number of underclassmen talk to her about it already.
So then, when we have that meeting, what I want, I want some background on districts around us. I wanna know what other districts are doing, because I feel like, I feel like this keeps rearing its head and I don't understand why it is such a struggle for us out here.
I think it's cause of the low graduation credit requirement, that we're only twenty-two.
Well, we're not.
I know it was.
I don't know, that's why I'm saying.
But we had, we had the eight-period day before, you know, so the kids could get, yeah, kids could get eight credits in a year, so after year two, there are already sixteen credits.
But I do, I still want that.
Yeah, but that wouldn't be.
I would like to know some other districts around us, what.
But I think that, that's probably where you're looking at, if they get, took eight each year, they're at sixteen and they only need six credits. And then the only ones, the, only ones they needed by the time they were seniors was a.
English and a social studies.
English and then a half of, they needed government. So they're really, and then they were, they were having to take four periods.
Is there still a state law that you have to earn four credits to get, um, the student payment?
Yeah, you have to, you have to be, to be enrolled as a full-time student, yes, yeah.
Anyway, he should decide what he wanna get to that.
I will talk to him about that one, yeah.
We want that before we go back to school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should, yes.
Ideally, policy, is it gonna take two readings, so we should almost have?
No, we can amend it, we can amend it one, yeah, yeah, cause we have, we have it in place already, we can just amend it one.
Started there.
Yeah, we're just amending it, yeah.
Just amending.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so we want that in July.
Gotta change that next line.
Yep, for next year, or for next month, yep.
JR have anything for?
Yep, uh, teacher schedules are finalized and student schedules are in the process of being finalized. Um, and then all, now that all the positions are filled, we got that taken care of. And then, uh, the science curriculum training is Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. And I think it's all day long and they're doing different, different groups.
Morning session and afternoon session.
You say all positions are filled?
Yep, yep, the last two will be approved tonight.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Uh, our next negotiation meeting is Monday night, would be June twenty-fourth, seven o'clock. And then that's the same thing JR, the science curriculum is on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. And then our, our strategic planning phone conference with, with Dr. Schatz is in July, that would be July ninth. And I think that, you know, that'll just be, I think he just wants to, I'll find out for sure if he wants anybody else involved. Um, and then, you know, give me the directions, what we need to do there. And then our next, um, special ed unit is on the twenty-third of June, or July, I mean.
Well, this conference thing, you'll find out.
I'll find out what, yeah, if he wants, who he wants involved, if he wants more than myself, if he wants the principals involved or whatever, or if he wants a team or whatever, so I'll find out from that. I think it's just initial to get things rolling, yeah, so I just need to know who he wants involved with that.
Anybody, anything else?
No.
Just clarification, Mr. Severson.
Yep.
Uh, the negotiation meeting, that's just for the negotiation team, right?
That's just for, that'd just be for the four negotiators, yeah, yeah, cause we'll do the strategy tonight and then they'll have it, you'll answer any questions, or they'll answer any questions you might have.
All right.
I thought maybe we got one another meeting. All business, non-certified staff discussion, so if it's, or, we're gonna go with salaries and stuff, and I did send you all the new printout of what we're gonna add. We've got all the numbers figured in, we'll wait. So is there any other discussion any has on that? What we talked about was, uh, I have a sheet here somewhere, these are all folder. What we had, what you guys kinda talked about when we were in with teaching, with the teachers last time was storm days, you guys talked about for the twelve months to allow the storm days. The match on the benefit for, to go to four percent instead of the two, we talked about that. The paras, we talked about where they fit and basically what the discussion was, is that the only thing Amy was, add the holiday pay was what was lacking on paras?
Yep.
And you guys were, looked at that. The raise part, I'll leave it open to what, where you wanna be now, just seeing that, we talked about either fifty cents or a dollar. The PTO time or vacation time, from what you guys said, you're leaving it as-is, is where you're at with that. Then were the things they brought up, they talked about then getting something out to everybody once we make a decision, so they, you know.
So they want something formal.
Formal out to them, when they got that. So I guess, the discussion is where we wanna go, cause so Amy can get everything entered in, you know, for the new payroll, we'll start for a lot of the ones July one, so that's what we had today's, today's meeting has the deadline to make a decision. You weren't here last time, so these are like, hold on from two percent to four percent? Well, that was the plan.
Yes, right.
Two percent on the match that is correct right now, and they talked about adding two to go to four percent for the ones that participate in that match. The question I have with that, now, everybody is, can, can go to the match, you know, not all participate, can bus drivers be part of that match? We don't specify that one way or the other.
It's only full-time.
Right.
Employees that are eligible for benefits, so they have to be eligible for benefits. Those twelve, those twelve-month employees.
Or nine months.
Or nine months.
Or nine months.
Or nine, nine months, one's qualified too.
Right.
That's what the question was.
Cause they're considered full-time for the nine months, so eligible for benefits.
Oh, okay, okay.
So a driver that's nine, well, we don't do anything.
They're, they would be full-time.
They wouldn't be full-time.
No, drivers are different categories.
Okay, yeah.
We had discussed that last.
Go around.
Yep, cause the drivers wanted it and they couldn't get it.
Correct. But I don't know, if you guys talked about that when we were out in with the teachers.
No, no, no.
They had marked out the question if we talked about that or not, well, you guys when you were in there.
Their recommendation is?
We, we, we recommend that you go with the, uh, the, the, uh, schedule as proposed on last month, so it was.
Well, what, the last one you said was a fifty cents, when we talked about.
Oh, we're talking, okay.
So I, I said I left the, the dollar amount open, cause I resent you the figures.
I go fifty cents.
If somebody were, you make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
So you're making a motion to, you ask for the storm days?
Yep.
To four percent for the benefit?
Yep.
Pairs to be covered, just as the rest of them include the holidays.
Correct.
Fifty cent an hour increase across the board, including bus drivers?
Correct. Yes.
No change on the PTO or vacation time?
Correct.
And when it's all done, we will send out a email, a communication or whatever.
Absolutely.
Yep.
That's just what you said, right?
Yep. That's what I want.
We need a second to that.
I'll second.
And if it's wrong, and I'm gonna stain from voting on this one, when you come around Amy, so.
Amy should be bucking for deduction.
Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yep.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Mike.
Not going, I'm staying.
I have to do it official.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Okay. That is approved. I think we'll shift the negotiation thing to the end, so we'll go to new business next, which are contracts approval, Mr. Severson.
Okay, we have two of them, uh, one for the elementary principal. And so we'll need a motion, or do you wanna do them both same time or do them separate?
Individual.
Okay.
Yep.
So we need a motion to approve our contract at seventy-two five, and then all the things that I don't have with in front of it. Of, um, what you've got for two hundred days, seventy-two five, um, we do need to amend the sick leave because you've got down, we've been giving them ten and it should be twelve, to match the teachers. Three days cumulative to five, disability, uh, dues to the state and national organizations, twelve-seven-five with TFFR, free lunch. Either the full single policy or twenty-five hundred dollars, that should be pre-K principal. And she signed the contract, so we just needed the approval.
I'll make a motion to approve, provided you perform.
Oh, fucking bad.
This is true Brett.
I got that after the interview.
I'll second, oh, go ahead, you can have it.
And I wrote down Cindy.
Well, we do look so much alike.
Roll call.
Especially white.
Rob.
Yeah.
Chad.
Yeah.
Michelle.
Yeah.
Cindy.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're in now.
I had my resignation approved at my other school, so.
Like Monday.
And then the other one would be Evelyn Rios, and she will be seventh and eighth grade, she's taking a position that Jeannie McGee had, uh, Jeannie's moving to English. Uh, three days personal, three days professional leave, three, three days personal leave, sick leave, twelve days district, uh, insurance, either twenty-five hundred or the full, full single. Uh, her contract will be forty-one thousand for a hundred and eighty-two contract days.
So what, what's the name of all you?
Evelyn, E-V-E-L-Y-N.
Yep.
Rios, R-I-O-S.
How many applicants did you have for that one, just to ask?
Well, what happened was, um, we did, we interviewed the, the English people and she had, she had the credentials for it. And so we talked to her when we weren't sure what Jeannie was gonna do, so that's where we got her from.
So is there other one or this one?
This was, this was the one we interviewed for, yes. There was, we, cause we, we opened up, we, we didn't have any more elementary applicants either. And they'd either have to have, they'd either have to have an elementary degree or a, a seventh, eighth grade in math and no, none of the other, none, none of the other elementary applicants, even, none of, nobody else applied, I should say, besides the ones we hired for elementary.
I make a motion to approve her contract. I'll second.
Rob.
Yeah.
Chad.
Yep.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Anybody have anything else?
Do you wanna do amended contracts?
Yeah, we could, you know, there, there's amendments we gotta do for a couple of the contracts, um. Yeah, Melissa's JR's, just the twelve days and then JR's has to be amended from K-12 to seven-twelve.
To the twelve days.
Sick leave.
Wouldn't have to.
Well, you wouldn't have to, but.
Them were the same, them were gonna be exactly the same as they were the year before, with just the addition of, that's what we did without.
What's that?
Those should be the same as they were the year before, just the change would be the amount.
The two days.
Should be the exact same contract as.
Yep, but they had ten days in the, in the principal ones and twelve days in the teachers.
Correct.
The negotiated agreement says twelve. And they followed, they followed the negotiated agreement though. Any, any benefits you offer the teachers has to be offered to the administrators.
Oh, that's dumb, dude.
Okay, so what does it say on personal days then for like Melissa? Cause we talked about switching hers to five, when we switched some things a year or so ago.
That, I guess I never looked at, I just saw that, when I, when we did Danielle's contract, I saw it was at, at ten.
Right, Melissa, then we, we switched, so you had the five personal days, correct? Yes.
But that's what, I mean, that's the way, the way, the way it works, is that if you, whatever's in negotiated agreement is guaranteed for the administrators as well as the teachers. So you'd have to have twelve sick days.
They're, they're gonna go to twelve sick days and three personal, if that's what you've changed.
That's what, yeah, well, that's what they are, I mean, that's what they've, that's what's in their contract, is it said ten days in their contract.
Right.
Where's it at here? Yeah, this one's got. Entitled to ten sick days and three personal days, cumulative to five.
This was a copy of JR's.
Yep, this was from last year's, yeah, this was from what you have, yes.
My concern was Melissa's, cause we talked about.
Okay, Melissa's, I, I, that one, if you, if you've done something with the twelve and the five, or ten and five. But you, but that would have to be noted somewhere because we, you're going against what, what you've said for sick days in negotiated agreement.
Okay, cause we thought we negotiated them separately from teachers.
Yeah, but you, but whatever's in negotiated agreement goes into the, into the administrators' contracts too.
So then it has to go to twelve and three.
I mean, that's my understanding, if I can do more checking on that, but that's, I mean, usually.
Do I have just two vacation days?
What?
Cause I have five.
No, this, the, the, in the amendment, you'd have to have twelve sick days. If you negotiated five.
Also, sick is confusing, it's not away from vacation.
Sick is different, yeah.
Seven.
Yes.
Personal days is the question, we should have hers from sick to personal, so personal's gonna have to go back to three.
You moved two of her sick days to personal, which would, as long as we note that, that'd be fine. But we still, but you've said that she had twelve sick days and you're gonna.
No, we had hers at ten and five, we said at twelve and three.
Just call it in.
Okay, so why was JR's at ten and three then?
Cause that's what we negotiated, Melissa's negotiated to get, so she had the five personal days instead of.
Cause JR never leaves and I do, so I wanted.
The issue was a few years back about when she took her vacation, I said then we've gotta fix it, so it's the five personal days if you're taking that week.
Okay, so she's ten and five.
She's got fifteen days or just ten and five and twelve and three.
Then the two, the two principals should be twelve and three then.
Yeah, we didn't change JR's.
Yeah, cause his stayed at ten, too, his said ten, too.
That would've probably been.
That should've changed.
Yeah, that, that, that said ten. So.
The only thing we adjusted was Melissa's last time when we.
Okay, so, so you're, basically it's gonna be fifteen days, Melissa's won't have to be amended, then you're gonna leave it at ten and five.
Melissa definitely has to think different, but that's what we talked.
And, and JR and Danielle will be, it'd be twelve and three, okay?
And JR's title is changing from seven, six, twelve.
Seven, six, yeah, seven-twelve.
Correct, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve those adjustments, said contracts.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Melissa.
What's her name on there?
You like a million today.
You should.
Did you say yes?
Yes, I know.
That'll be Chad.
Cindy. Brent.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
So yeah, yours is not changing.
I don't think this is the title.
I think so.
That could be.
Okay, anything else?
I just, I, I, Bud had this out here, it looks like the payments are fifty-eight, eight, fifty-eight, thirty-three, seventy-seven. And if I'm looking at it balanced at the end, it says forty-three, six, twenty-one. If I'm reading it right.
I'll bring it down, the lead, he's using a system. If that's the case, we're better off buying this one out. At twenty-four. But we can think on that.
Or maybe on the other side, where, maybe it's, maybe it's worth a.
The southern one he's got under balance due.
Yeah, balance dues forty-three thousand.
He's got balance due over here at twenty-two. So that's what I was confused on, cause that's at forty-three and it says, that gives the principal, mom, and this gives balance.
Well, why don't, we're gonna vote and have him clarify where we're at and, he can even come next month and explain it.
Okay. Okay.
Otherwise, we're just guessing what they've all talked about. We'll just have him come and check that out. You got anything else?